I'd like to call to order the special comment council meeting for August 6th, 2024 at 5:30 PM. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Attendance roll call.
All their persons wolf.
Here.
Hamel.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Schwer.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Kubaki.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law on Friday, August 2nd, 2024.
Thank you. Public comment. Does anyone here from the public would like to say anything or have any comments on any of the, well, the one agenda item? Just come forward and state your name and address.
The mic may not be on. You'll have to turn it on.
He's gonna have to state his name and address slowly.
Got it?
Yep.
Greg Shaw, South 77, West 168, 52, Bridgeport Circle, Muskego, 53150. I'm with the Muskego Warrior Baseball Organization. In my own opinion, not speaking on behalf of the group, I think the proposal is a great asset for our community. I don't know too much about it. I'm here to learn a little bit more about it. My understanding is approximately $850,000, which is a ton of money, and INPRO is donating a large portion of it. But I would say as a resident with a kid in baseball, two other kids that play other sports, I think it's a great thing for our community and somehow thank INPRO for stepping up. It's amazing. So we're lucky to have a business like that here. You guys know that, obviously. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to?
Mike Miller, address S64W18951, School Drive, Muskego. I represent the Muskego Warriors. I think this is a great idea for our community, for the kids, with what the high school has done, with their upgrades. It's, it's, I know a lot of people from around the area. There are, sound southeast of Wisconsin, from McQuinn all the way down to Kenosha, out to Heartland. They're all impressed with what we've done at the high school. I do feel like what we need to do for our youth programs would help. There isn't really a great field out there right now for the kids to use when they get to 13 or 14. Park Arthur obviously turfed the fields there, so the youth kids from seven all the way to 12 years old have nice fields to use. But other than that, there really isn't a field to use. I know there's Horn and then Park Arthur, which if it rains, you can't really use it at all. But again, talking to people, they've been very impressed. They said Muskego's got a great community. They're impressed with how we're improving our facilities for athletics. And as someone that moved here several years ago, this is one of the reasons why we moved out here was because of schools and the athletics and the facilities that you guys have for for the families and the community. So definitely feel like this would be a good asset for the community.
Thank you.
Just sing on?
Yep.
Hello, Jim Becker, President of Muskego Athletic Association. For those that are unaware, we've been in business for about nonprofit since 1945. We handle about 600 to 1,000 kids per year with softball, baseball, and flag football rec leagues. When we turf the fields at Park Arthur, Diamonds 1, 2, and 3, what it did was it made advantages for the kids now to play as much baseball and softball throughout the year as, you know, with the weather, no rainouts. And considering that Muskego is a hotbed for youth sports, it's also brought in to the community a lot of additional games as well. We have competition coming in from other organizations that want to play at our fields because they know they're well-kept, they know they're turfed, and they know that they're going to play due to the rainouts at their fields. So I think this is very important for the, not only the organization from Muskego, but also the community as well, because it's not just the Muskego Athletic Association using it. Like you heard before, the Warriors, we have the Storm, we have a lot of different organizations that would take advantage of this. So I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assuming none of you want to talk. Moving on, new business. Preauthorization of a, of 2025 capital budget item request, Park Arthur Field Number 4.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. This was brought forward, I mean, actually, Scott, do you want to come forward and give the reasoning and kind of go through why we're asking for this to come forward early versus waiting for the next budget?
Could I request before you do that?
Sure.
Do a little history, including what we've talked about in past budgets to get to the next level to where you're at? Is that, is that fine? There's new people on here that don't understand what's going on.
Can you be more specific as far as when you say like past budgets to get, you mean like how we got, how we did the, the three diamonds?
Right, and, and what we, we talked about and just, just a.
So just go through the.
Elevator speech.
The, the three diamonds, why we, why we turf them, what advantages you've seen or disadvantages, both of them.
Okay. I might need some help here.
I don't want to, you know, you don't have to make it a real long speech. Just a, just a summary.
So, so one of the reasons why we started looking at a couple things. One for sure, we started doing, what do we have here? Field prep. So field prep was a big issue. We had to have 150 bucks for people to do field prep, and we were having games that couldn't work. So one of the reasons we got to the point, we turfed the fields. This allowed us to do a user fee instead of field prep. It also brought in a lot of tournaments. So we have currently 18 tournaments a year right now that we're going through. It's a kind of a high level that we did, and we were the first ones that decided to turf our fields instead of doing it. We couldn't do Field 4, too expensive. We did Field 1, 2, and 3, and we started in 2022 is when we turfed them, 2021, and then first year play was 2022. It's already that quick. So.
If I remember right, wasn't there a problem with how they were originally built?
Yes. The whole park, why they said Field 4 doesn't work, when Field 4, when it rains, you can't use it for a while. So the big thing besides turfing Field 4 is really changing the grade. A lot of the Fields 1, 2, and 3, we kept going out there. The drainage kept being an issue. So besides turfing it, we improved all, we raised all the, the grades of all the field. So from beforehand to now hand, if you go out there, you're like, wow, it's a couple feet higher. So one, improve the drainage to the turf. So it was something that was done before I was here, and the fields weren't graded well, and now they are, and you can tell it's been very successful.
One of the major things that like MAA would, could attest to was when, and this is before I was mayor, if you remember the controversy of the cost of preps, prepping the fields was getting more and more, and we were, we just passed that cost along to the clubs, but it was like $150 per game that they were paying versus now they pay $100 for the, for the day for using it. So I mean, it was a substantial savings for the clubs. In addition to that, like Scott said, we do have a pretty good revenue stream that we're building an account. So as these things need to be replaced in the future, we have, we have funds that we're building up for that.
I, I think the other thing communication wise, like today, it rained last night. We would start the conversation where we field prep the fields. Are their fields going to be ready? Are the, you know, we would have to make a call whether or not we would cancel games. We don't cancel games now. It would be our staff trying to field prep it, they would be calling us, we'd be calling other people, Tammy, we'd be rescheduling. We hardly ever reschedule games anymore. It's kind of amazing, but there's no issues and takes away a lot of communication issues between us, the organizations, and just the parents who are running things. You're guaranteed games pretty much from April to October unless there's like lightning out there. It's kind of nice. And if you see this idea of turf, it's going to all the other communities. We're just one of the first ones to start. Yep?
I'm sorry, were Fields 1, 2, and 3 all put in starting in 2021?
Yeah, we turfed them in 2021. They started in 2022 for play. So.
I think we did one, and then we did two and three or something? Is that?
We did them all, all, all the same year. Yep.
See, what, I don't know if you mentioned when it, when it was built, it was not done properly, I guess.
Yeah.
Which is things we find out as we go along. But so they had to be redone. That's how this all started. So I just want to give you guys, the new people, a little history. So before you got into your presentation or whatever.
So any other history, other history stuff? So why we're asking now to go early, we've, this is no different than we asked for other things early because of money. It's always about money and saving. So right now, we are able to have the company come in, do this work, get this work done, get it online, so we don't lose any tournament or any play starting in 2025. That's kind of the goal here. Two, we all know, and from the company, in 2025, they're seeing a 10% increase cost in, in the cost of turf, labor, freight, et cetera. So they're planning ready for a cost. We would not pay anything until 2025. So that's kind of like looking at it. Also, too, a lot of this work, we're having our own people take care of some stuff to save money. Ryan is going to project manage it. So if Ryan project manages it, we don't have to hire a project manager. Think of whatever costs we got from the turf company, 10% for them would be for a project manager. So I think it's probably about $85,000 to hire a project manager. Point of beginning would charge another amount, but we're doing it all ourselves. Our DPW guys are also taking down the fence, correct? So we're saving money there. We're trying to do as much as we can to help out to keep the costs as low as possible. That's why we're asking for you to start this work now. So.
It also fits in their window right now for DPW availability to do that. If we wait till after the first of the year and they're, when they're tied up with snow plowing and other things, we, they, they just won't have the bandwidth to be able to do that. So that would probably have to be something we would have to have an outsourced, outsourced that we wouldn't have to if we start in fall.
Yeah. Right now, you've got to think of road program. We're 95% done with the road program. Hill and Dale Road, the new schedule came out. We are hoping to get binary on that road the second week in September. All our projects happen early, and we're kind of ending it. So we have this window where we can use as much as our DPW staff as possible. This is the best time to take advantage of this. So, and it's not, we're not paying any bills till 2025. That's, that was kind of the goal. So.
Do you remember what the cost of the three fields were when they, when they?
Yeah, it was about 675? Was it? What? 800? 800.
For all three?
All three. Now, this is a lot bigger field. It's a lot bigger field. And also, too, this is the worst one. So we're going to have to do some significant grading out there. And you've got to think of everything bigger. Fence is bigger, the grading is more, is bigger, things like that. It's just a bigger field. If you go out there, it's considerably bigger than the other three. The other thing, too, is the price has gone up considerably. I'm, I'm knocking you. We would never, we would not get that same price to do those three fields right now. So. Last year, I think it provided, last year, we're about $70,000 in revenue for doing tournaments, and we're about, right about there for the second, second time. So we'll hit that for about 2024.
Is that using all four fields?
Yep. If.
Four is not used at.
But you're, but you're using all four fields. I mean, just in general?
Yeah, in general. Yeah.
Hmm, no, sorry.
Um.
It's up to you guys.
If you have a just quick question, that's fine.
Mr. Melly, if you.
For me.
We have our tournament every year at Park Arthur, and we use at least all fields, but we do not use three. We actually organize, and we play varsity field, the 14s, and 13 olds play on the JV field to the dirt field. This year, our 13 olds did not get to play because it rained all Friday night. So our tournament, the 13 olds and the 7 olds got canceled. We have dirt fields. So again, we didn't use Park Arthur because it's a dirt field, and it rained, it's canceled. We have turf, we usually have that playing. So.
So we're going to have a predictable, predictable field. We're going to have a safer field. We're going to have a field with less maintenance. Why are we here?
I, I mean, I can tell you, too, the last two years, when we did cost, I think it was 7, 7,523, 5,024. The reason why is as more people are playing on these fields, we got to keep that Field 4 safe. It's costing us more money because it's in bad shape. We already have a cost of about an extra $1,500 every other year to maintain that turf, and then I think every other year will be $4,500. That's just for the turf material. Now, again, it's all in capital. If we don't use it all, we don't spend it, but you guys can see the line item in capital.
And this is landfill money?
Yes. Everything in capital this year is going to be able, be able to be funded through landfill. We have enough in there.
Well, and you ask, why should we be here? I think it's procedural that we should be here. Now that it's, now that we're here and I'm looking at it, I think that we should vote on this rather than what we did before. It was just kind of like, okay, let's do it. It's not a, it's a budget item.
It's more transparent. That's fine.
Yeah. So I, I think that's probably a good thing, but I'm not, I'm not calling for a vote now. I, you know, I just want to start a dialogue on why we're here. So.
Another thing, too, if we didn't get a donation, guys, this is probably something that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
I, I want to be honest with you. It wouldn't be on our schedule. I mean, it's similar to this. We have a dog park, guys, and I know that's highly wanted, one in the park survey. We probably wouldn't have done it unless we got the donation.
We haven't did a dog park forever. As we talked about in past meetings, people wanted to be more private and public over the, as far as the council wanted, you know, because of the money involved. But once somebody stepped up with the big dollars, just like getting the first dog for the police station, you know, it's kind of nice to have, have something like that around. But yeah, the other issue that, I shouldn't say issue, the other comment would be the, if, if that's what we have, I mean, do we have bids out there? You're saying we're going to save $84,000, which is 10%. And then if you're doing the work, you're, you know, I don't know what the management would be, but I see that taking the fence down. They're, they're going to put it back up. We're paying them to put it back up. But there's still a cost savings in that. But how do we know, I mean, this is the same turf company we used before? Or did we, did we go out the bid?
So how, how we do this is, okay, so back in 2021, we joined TIPS. I don't know if you remember that, T-I-P-S. So that's how we run our contract through, similar to when we do playground. We get the best deal possible by going through, through these, these things.
Yeah, it's kind of like a buying group. So.
Correct. So that's what, how we're doing it. That we're, we are part of TIPS members. We should go out there, choose the turf company. We get the contract through that TIPS thing. They guarantee it's the lowest bid possible. A lot of government organizations, I got a whole list of schools that, that do it in other communities. We take advantage of it. It's no different than our playground equipment. That's why we don't have to go out the bid. They're part of this organization. It gives us the best price possible. So that's how we're doing it. We got the three bids for the, the fence. I think I showed you there is a Patriarch, Munson, and who's, who's the third one? Centric. So we got those thing. There's a portable mound. That was, that cost in there, too. What that allows us to do is we can pull that portable mound back and forth, so that allows us to have different teams that can play on that field. We're trying to make these fields as versatile as possible. It's not a one thing. So.
Well, when you do it, do it right. I mean, that's what I always say. So.
Correct. So.
So with tip, this tip system, you only get one bid. You don't, you can't.
We just, we ask for it, and they guarantee us that it's the lowest bid possible. That's why we do this.
Who guarantees it?
Tips. It's the government, it's, we, that's how we do our Wisconsin Playground. That's how the sys, the system's set up.
The state does that with, like guaranteed state pricing. So companies will have guaranteed state pricing, and it's the lowest price. They guarantee that they're the lowest price.
Okay, so my question then is, you're saying that whoever gave you this bid is only guar- so this started out with an email from Rick the other day saying he had a contract he had to sign by a certain day.
So here's, here's what.
Then I came to, just let me finish. Then I came to find out, I, I asked more questions. We've never really even discussed this project. We're in the middle of the cap, you know, we're in the middle of the budget process, and we're cherry picking one thing out of the whole budget to rush through when we're told there's this contract. Well, there wasn't even a contract. There was no actual contract that Rick was going to be signing on Thursday. I was actually in the attorney's office yesterday. There was still no con, there's, we didn't get it till today. I don't even know that it's been thoroughly vetted and reviewed.
So how I would usually come for this, I would have another week, just to let you know. This is a special meeting because.
Yeah, it is because I requested it. That's why we're doing this.
But I would be doing this at the next meeting, just that it's canceled because of the voting. So I can't have it on that. So we had to call this meeting so that we could handle it so that.
We didn't call this meeting because we could handle it. We, Rick was going to sign a contract with us just voting over email without a discussion.
No, that's not, that's not true.
That's how this all started.
It's actually not true, and it's in front of you. Thanks for providing that.
Yeah, I did provide it.
We, we've done this in the past. We talked about it.
We never talked about this. We've never discussed this.
I'm not going to argue with you. It's on tape.
It is on tape. Wasn't, there was no discussion about this project, about the cost of it or anything.
Says you. The, as far as saying, I asked for an answer to, for clarification, if there's any objection to going forward with it, let me know. I ask to be known by noon on a certain date.
And that was at the cow?
Well, no, I sent an email.
No, that was in the email.
I sent an email, and I said, if I can hear from people by noon, by a certain day, otherwise I'm going to go, if I don't hear from anyone, if there's no objections, then I'm going to go forward, and we've done this in the past.
But we, we talked about it at the cow.
We did talk about it.
Okay, that's, okay, I just want to clarify that.
We talked about it, we talked about it at the cow, and so I asked for, if there's any objections. First one, both Alderman Decker and Alderman Schrader asked to have a special meeting on it. We scheduled a special meeting, and here we are.
Well, I also talked to you on the phone, and you told me you didn't need to do a meeting. You could have just signed it because it was approved at the cow, which is not true. And you lied to me.
Not lying.
Rick, you said the same thing to me.
There wasn't consensus at the cow.
You said the same thing to me that you didn't need.
Hang on, guys.
There was no consensus.
One at a time. I said, I said the exact same thing to you, correct?
Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah.
We were going ahead without any approval. There was no approval.
No, I didn't say that. I said, I was under the impression I had approval from the cow, and if there was any objection to it, you were in my office. You said, I have an objection to it. I said, fine.
That's why I came in to object.
But we, which is fine.
There was no approval.
And, and, that's why I asked for clarification.
And, and then.
If I was 100% thinking we were going to go forward, I would have just done it. I didn't.
Well.
You told me you could have.
One at a time.
You told me you didn't need.
Yeah, you told me that also, that you didn't need our approval, that you could just sign it. You were doing it as a courtesy. The email was a courtesy.
The email was a courtesy for clarification. I was, I had asked legal counsel if I had gotten approval from it. I was told I had approval to move forward. I said I wasn't, I wasn't comfortable with it. So I drafted an email. I sent it forward. We're here today. What's the argument? You got what you wanted?
No, what I want is this back in the budget to discuss, in the budget.
That's what we're here to vote on today. So you get to, you get to vote the way you want.
Okay. But again, your email and your conversation with me told me you could just sign this.
Right here.
I know, I printed it up.
Okay. Exactly what I said. Not that, I'm not contesting anything in the email.
You told me the email was a courtesy.
Yes.
That you could just sign this because it was approved through the cow. You said it was already approved. It is not approved.
That's what I was told.
Can I just say?
Sure.
I missed out. I don't know what this whole little war is about because I missed it. But the money that we get from the landfill is actually targeted and was put in place for these exact kind of projects. So I don't know what the whole, I don't, I don't understand what the war is about.
Because we're, we're still working on the budget, and I just don't feel comfortable until we have gone through the budget. We, we just talked about so much that we need with roads and all kinds of upcoming expenses with fire departments and actual real needs of our community. And I get it that this is a gift from INPRO, but, and I get it, there's a, maybe a cost savings, but I'm not even 100% sure that you couldn't negotiate with these people to do it at a later date and still get the savings. I don't know what kind of phone calls you've had with them, but I, I just don't feel like we have enough information. I feel like a lot of this was done behind the scenes without providing council the proper time and information to actually move forward with this project tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I agree with that.
Okay.
You know, when I saw the, the item on the May 16th agenda of the approval for the $400,000 grant from INPRO, it, it kind of upset me because it, it felt like it was being snuck through.
Okay.
I just make a quick comment, and that's why I said in the beginning, and you said transparency, I think this is the way we should handle this.
I don't.
And, and it is, it is a new dimension of a, of a council compared to the past when we did the other fields. You know, and we've had discussions. So we, I think some of us were more in sync than others right now as far as past discussions go. So the transparency part is, is a part that I think we got to look at in the future when we do these things in a consensus, especially when it's for a next year's budget. But one thing I will say, I mean, I do understand and, and, and agree somewhat with what they're saying, is that Eileen brought up a good point. The money is from the landfill, and it is going to the community, and it is targeted, and it is targeted for next year's budget. And INPRO, I would probably believe would still donate the money if, if we delayed it.
The timeframe of when we do this has no impact, well, I shouldn't say.
We don't know that, right?
We don't know. If, if we were to do it, if we approve this for, to go forward after January or now, wouldn't have any impact on, on INPRO providing the money.
But it will have an impact.
Years, yes.
Yeah, we do have an impact on, on savings, on increase of price increases.
And, and allowing our own staff to be able to participate in the construction of it.
And, and the other part is, is, you know, how do we do know? I mean, it's a valid point to ask, how do we know TIPS is the best price? I mean, do we, do we go out and get quotes after we do tips, or we just use them and just take their word on it because other communities do it, and we know it's.
Jeff might be able to address something.
TIPS is a organization set up just for this kind of stuff. And so it's, it's been set up for a while now, and it's throughout the country. And you basically, what Scott says, they vet these contracts for you, and so you go to them, and they guarantee by being a member that they're going to give you the lowest vetted, most reasonable price in terms of a contractor that would be a good contractor to do it. So that part isn't, that part is, part is fine, that we know we're getting the best price. This isn't a construction contract, so we're not going out and doing bids like you would do for a.
And we can, and we can check that by, you kind of know what it costs per square foot to do turf or something, right? I mean, you, you guys have been, I mean, that's your job. So you should know what a square foot is and approximately, like when you want to put a trailer in, you know how much the asphalt's going to cost roughly, so you know what the trail's going to, you kind of estimate that out before you get the bids.
So if, if you just Google tips, they explain everything. They explain their contracts.
I see. Don't talk to me, but I'm just, I'm bringing it out for everybody else.
I'm just looking this way. But if you Google tips, they, they explain everything that we're all asking today is all on their website.
Is this a free service?
Yes.
Yes.
We didn't, you become a member.
When we joined it four years ago, there was no cost to us. It's to provide us the best advantage to take care, to take this. It's no different than when we did our playground. Think of this. We have not gone out for a bid for our playground. We use Wisconsin or Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground to get the best price possible. That's, that's the key of this. That's, that's the point of like, take advantage of it. This is one of our tools and our toolboxes that we're going to use.
It's set up for municipality schools. It's set up for government.
So do we ever double check to make sure that they are giving us the, I mean, would they guarantee it or what? Your money back? I mean, how do we know that we're getting the best price? If you don't ever get another bid and you're just relying on this, I mean, this is other people's money we're spending. So I, I just have questions.
I think the appropriate question would be, they're guaranteeing the lowest price. Are they getting the estimates for us and have a group of estimates coming in and saying this is what it is? This is the lowest price? So they're getting all these estimates coming, and we supply to them what we're looking for, and then they.
And they have done that in the past, and so they have a thing set up of if you're looking for this type of a project, this is how we have the contractors that'll do that particular project. So it depends on the project. But yes, they have vetted these, these different companies.
If you go there, it's not just turf. It can be a whole range of things that we can look at.
Reputation is part of it, too.
Correct. And, and they, they, they're the ones that doing the QAQC for us. That's, that was the point of, of joining this thing.
Putting things out of the public bid is never, is not. Putting things out of public bid is never, not never, but more like, more times than not, not cheaper. If you can avoid public bidding, it usually, it usually comes in cheaper for most projects.
So just, just to let you know, for lowest cost, too, the last time we did the first person of Hill and Dale Road, the lowest bid, we did not choose. Remember that. And just because it wasn't the lowest bidder, and I know we went through some legal ramifications for that, but that was by far a better move on our, on our point, so.
Well, it has to be the, what's the word, not re, it has to be a qualified person.
But, but that's a bid, though, right?
How, how did we, how did we get the bids on the fields that were not done properly?
I have no idea. I have no idea, twenty years ago.
That, that was no idea. I have no idea how they set it up. I don't know if they publicly bid it. I have no idea whatsoever.
TIPS is also assisting you to get that qualified bidder, so you're not worried so much about. Again, it's all vetted for you, but it's, it's, it's done for governments. This isn't just something that just came about. Again, look them up.
Well, government doesn't always know how to save money, so I, again, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we just maybe reached out and got another bid, just from a local or contractor that does this, that we could verify this supposed cost savings that we had to jump on this tonight.
Is it, Scott, is there a reason why the, the fences were put out for the bid? Why they weren't covered by the TIP program?
Yeah, we, we broke that out. We just found out we could probably do that cheaper, and so that's why we got three bids for you guys. Certain things we just found out we could do better.
Are there a lot of contractors out there that do this turf? I mean, I, you're not going to get ten of them, are you? How many do you get?
There's three reputable, I would say, throughout the U.S. For what we're looking for, we can put in a garbage product, and that's what we're going to get in three years.
The reason why we did it this way is the same way, we're like, I buy equipment, I use the same stuff.
Is it off here?
Is this one of the companies that, throughout the country, that you're saying one of the three companies? Right. Have you used these guys before?
They did Park Arthur, one, two, and three, they've all worked at the bicycle, it's just stuff that.
Well, I would think if they're doing all that kind of stuff for us, they would give us a little extra time to figure out and potentially hold this price value that they're talking about for a couple more weeks till we get through our process here.
Well, one of the issues with that, as I see it, is that to do it in fall, these fields will be ready for next year's tournaments. There are certain limitations to what can be used for landfill funds. They can't be used for roads, they can't be used for fire departments. There, there's some strict limitations to this.
Well, we do have a, a big splash pad that I see that we're requesting as well. That's a big ticket item.
Well, this is one of those items that have been on the agenda. That's, that's on a schedule for a future date.
And I, I think honestly, too.
And this has been out there, Deb, for, for quite some time.
Pushing the field back another year.
One at a time.
Pushing the field back another year is not going to make or break anything. I, I don't feel like we need to be rushed into something.
I think it costs, though.
If we push the, if we push the field back another year, we're looking at a million dollar.
And I'm not even, and I'm not even saying push it back another year, but let's get through the. I, I just don't want to get in the habit of cherry picking things out of the budget. We could, anything on that budget, if we did it this year, it's going to be cheaper. Let's be real, guys. This is just pushing something through. Anything we take off, that we could take anything off and say, hey, let's do it now, it's going to be cheaper. I asked Scott about that at the cow, it's a fact. Everything goes up in price. So this pushing at this is really bothersome to me. At this one thing that we're cherry picking out of the budget when we're in the middle of the budget process. I think the way it's been handled with Rick telling us he's going to sign something unless he hears from us, and we haven't really fully discussed this. I just don't like the whole tone of how this project is kind of being forced on us.
I'm in agreement with that.
It just really is not.
All right, is there any new conversation on this?
I'd like to call the question, please.
All those in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Majority has it. All those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Actually, just do a roll call vote.
Okay. We're going to do a roll call vote. So in favor?
No, just do.
Okay.
You're voting on the motion.
Yeah, explain what we just did. I don't think, with new people here, we got to.
We did two votes. One vote was, we're done discussing it, we're going to vote. Now we're voting on the motion, we're voting on the motion as presented, say yea or nay.